Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a special business meeting for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to go ahead and ask that our Clerk Wykoff please call the roll.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Council members present in establishing a quorum are council members Foulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And can you remind, was Councilmember Gamble, did he indicate that he would not be here this evening in an earlier meeting?
Don't recall.
Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and announce for the record when he enters chambers or sometime thereafter, what time he enters. Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I am the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, foundation under the God of individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is a time for people to speak to the city council on any issue in person related to the city of Monroe, except those issues that are subject to a public hearing. When invited to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and association with the city or area of residence. The timer will then be started. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Let me go ahead and we do have a sign up sheet this evening. The person who signed in is Wendy Wyker. Please come on up and good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Wendy Wyker. I work for Public Services. We are located down in Bellevue and in Linwood. First of all, I want to say first and foremost, so sorry for the disruption this summer. I know July was a tough month in Monroe. It was a tough month for us and our drivers everywhere as well. As you know, from the information back and forth, we shared all summer long, there was an out of state disruption we didn't know about until it happened and kept going day after day after day. So I hope that you know, we worked as hard as we could to serve as many people as we could during that time with the out of state, non-union representatives we had driving for us to cover as much as we could. The communications we worked with every day that we were supposed to be here on Wednesday or Thursday of those two weeks, started early in the morning and went late into the night. We also did as much communications with residents as we could. And I know we have lots that we could have done better and we are always welcome to process improvements and feedback to that effect. That said, I have been listening to your council meetings in the last couple of months and weeks about that and look forward to talking with you further as we move forward. I also want to say I look forward to this evening's work that you have and the decision before you about the credits and the reimbursement we hope to provide to you and your residents. We are waiting to provide those credits until we have council approval to do so. So thank you for your time. I want you to know that Monroe is a valued partner of ours and a long-term commitment that we have and we value and we hold with the utmost professionalism as much time as we can, all the time with our residents and businesses here. So again, look forward to continuing the conversation. Please know that we appreciate your business and we'll do everything in our power to ensure we don't have this kind of disruption again. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak this evening during the three minute public comment period? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is, one moment, while I flip the page, public hearing. This is item 5.1, public hearing to receive comment on proposed amendments relating to permit processing and Washington Senate Bill 5290, local permitting. Kate Turtleow, good evening. And please let the record show that council member Gamble entered chambers at 7:04 PM. Good evening. Go ahead, Kate, when you're ready. Oh, and I keep forgetting with the public hearing stuff, we are now going to open up the public hearing. We do have rules and procedures are on our website. I can read them if I need to, but I will hold on that for right now. And Kate Turtleow is going to provide a description of the matter and the hearing is now open. I think I covered everything. Go ahead.
Eric, is this on? Yes, okay. So this evening I'm providing just a little bit more information. The packet before you is very similar to what I presented two weeks ago. We have not received any additional comments, feedback from the public before this evening's public hearing. Again, this is regarding permit processing, Senate Bill 52, or yeah, 5290 that passed in 2023. And in your packets is included the planning commission's recommendation, their findings of fact, the draft ordinance that includes all the proposed amendments to the Monroe Municipal Code, a copy of House Bill 5290, and then a copy also of the notice that we sent to Commerce and their acceptance for expedited review. Okay, again, this is just a refresher. Washington State has provisions that are somewhat associated with the Growth Management Act. It was started with called, we called it regulatory reform and it was a way to expedite and be more expeditious about how we review land use applications. And so the bill in 2023 is really looking at further refining how jurisdictions review land use applications. As I mentioned, the first time I presented this, there is a clause in this bill that the state law has a pre-exemption. So we've been reviewing under the new timelines and about to present to you. So we're already following the changes. The other piece that was required is we had to provide information to the Washington Department of Commerce of how well we are meeting the timelines for permit review. We did that in March. As I stated before, we had two permits that went beyond the required timeline, but we had negotiated with the applicants. So we did what we're supposed to do. And then, let's see here. Okay, so next slide. Thank you. So the biggest, the two biggest pieces of this change are when regulatory reform came into play in the 1990s, it had a generic timeline of 120 days to review a permit with several pieces in there. First, the city would have to say that your application is complete and that is based on the application. That is not changing. That's when the review clock begins. There are a few exemptions from that 120 days and that is subdivisions and wireless communication facilities. The wireless have federal requirements we have to follow. So with the refinements, they're changing the reviews based on the amount of public participation. So if you have an administrative review where the planning director is the deciding body and it doesn't require any public input, then we have to complete our review within 65 days. If it's the same type of review, but it requires a public notice such as CIPA or in our code, it says you must notify people within 500 feet, then we're given 100 days. And the timing differences is to allow for those public notices. We have certain timeframes, we have to meet for those as well. And then the final category is 170 days and that's when you have a public hearing. And then the only, the other piece that's important as well is we had to make changes to our permit fees. There is a, if we do not meet the timeframe, we do have to provide a refund to the applicant. So there's caveats also on the clock, the things that were in place back in the 1990s where you could stop the clock. If they are missing information, you need more information, that did not change. And then the only other piece is that if the city is not meeting the timelines, which I'm very confident we will, we may be asked to do more in 2026. Next slide, please. All right. So it was pretty comprehensive and because we were looking at so many different chapters, staff took this as an opportunity to also do some housekeeping. So I did want to point out in your agenda bill on page six of 222, it lists out which chapters were changed because of either the state law change or if it was housekeeping. So if you had questions, I can help you, help explain why we did it. The housekeeping was done for internal consistencies and also items that we had not fixed since the UDR was adopted in 2019. Okay, next slide. So the biggest changes in our code really are chapter 2284 and that is our permit process. And this slide just shows you on the left-hand side.
One through three are one, the clock, review clock applies to it's what we consider clause and judicial. It's legislative, it's not, it doesn't fall under these categories, but we wanted to, so the public, it's not that we're going to help you off. So we need to add that to the section in the code. So the two were created to include categories. Title four is what you'd write, so the count is, it's a clause and judicial, it's a specific reason. The three examiner will hold public hearing and make recommendations to see council have to pass by the decision. And four, five, our annexation and the government agreement, so we kind of the new plan, and able to put the city out, but we wanted to capture that process. And then type six is what used to be four, that's all of their legislative, the conference of plans, zoning code amendments and the like. Next slide. So the CD is the public hearing and having answered any questions. If you are, if you saw our little questions, the people who got orders is by, I'm here to give some recommendations.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any clarifying questions to ask of staff before I open this up for public comment? All right. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. If you're interested in providing testimony on this particular ordinance, please raise your hand. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move back to the council members. Councilmembers, do you have any additional questions to ask of staff? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
Could you go back one slide on your presentation? Thank you for the presentation. On the final decision authority line, that change in the type three column from, all right, I lost which column it was. There was something that changed from a city council decision to a hearing examiner decision. Do I understand that correctly?
The item we had added were the type five or two. So type four, there's a site specific reason where the three examiner holds public hearing, he will, or she will make the recommendation to. So that's, that's the shape of how this is.
Okay, got it.
Capture. And then the type five are the items that only comes to council, but that's your.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? All right. Unless there's objection, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any objection? Saying none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now I turn to the council. Is there a motion? Councilmember Fisher?
I would actually make a request to poll 6.3 ordinance 172025. Are we at the consent agenda? Is that what I'm hearing? Not yet.
No, the requested action is up on the screen in front of you for your consideration.
Okay, I'll go to, I'll move to that one then. Move to accept first reading of ordinance 0202025, amended Monroe Municipal Code, updating the city of Monroe project permitting process for compliance with second substitute Senate Bill SB 529.
Yeah, a motion from Councilmember Fisher, second from Councilmember Foulcher for the request action. 5.1 is shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That is the consent agenda. I turn to the council. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Okay, can I do it now?
Yep.
Yeah, I would like to poll 6.3 ordinance 0172025, code revisions to municipal Monroe Municipal Code, Title IX Park Code for discussion.
All right. Thank you. I have the consent agenda then is modified to remove 6.3. My turn to the council then for item 6.1 and 6.2 on the consent. Councilmember Walker?
I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet, including the update.
Okay, so that it's moving to approve consent agenda, item 6.1 and 6.2, noting that 6.3 has been pulled from the consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Councilmember Scarborough, second. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and staff, have staff come forward for 6.3. Do we have somebody who can represent 6.3? Thank you, Kevin. Councilmember, so Director Teague, if you could just very, very briefly for the listening audience, just give the title of what 6.3 is and just a, just a very simple sentence as to what it involves, if the title's not adequate to describe it. And then we'll go to Councilmember Fisher.
All right. Thank you. For the record, Parks Director Kevin Teague, ordinance 0172025, code revisions to Monroe Municipal Code, Title IX Park Code. These updates are to make the code more enforceable and to kind of shore up some of the issues that we've had with enforcement in the past.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Teague. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Yeah, I just kind of want to open up the conversation again with firearms in our parks. We talked about it, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. I was one of the ones that voted to allow open carry in our parks. Part of that reason was that whole conversation was moving pretty quick and I really wanted, I didn't want to make any changes until I really had a chance to, to kind of dive into our second amendment and kind of look at that. Since then, I would like to open up the discussion more. Here's some of your guys' thoughts. If it, if your mind has changed at all or what you think about open carry in our parks. With that being said, I don't want to make it illegal to have a concealed weapons permit, but open carry in our parks, I'm not so sure is what we're looking for in our parks. So that's what I have for now. If anybody else wants to discuss it, I would enjoy it.
All right. So we can do a couple of things because that could be its own separate discussion item. Let me ask the director, do we need to approve this tonight? Is this something, for example, that we could bring back to our next meeting in, to a meeting in October to have a conversation over firearms in our parks?
We could, yes.
Okay. So as council, so Councilmember Walker, one of the things that you could do tonight is make a motion to have this come back for discussion to focus on firearm conversation potentially in October, according to, you know, how full the agenda is. So if that's something that's of interest, you could certainly make that motion, see if we get a second and then we can move from there.
Yeah, some discussion I think would be okay if we could tonight, just so we're not having staff go through something that possibly isn't going to pass.
Yeah, by making the motion, seeing if you've got a second to bring this back for a conversation about firearms would then allow there to be a discussion on the motion that's on the floor. And, and then if you don't have a majority interested in doing that, then we can remove, we can return to the requested action 6.3. Does that make sense?
Sounds great.
So the motion that you would make would be to move to have this come back to the council for a discussion on permitting firearms in our parks. And that would be the motion. So you could say so moved?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Sure.
It is open carry, not firearms.
Okay, open carry. So we'll correct that to have this come back to the council to discuss more specifically, open carry.
Yes, I'll just make a motion, I make a motion to bring this back for a discussion to council on concealed weapons permits and open carry in our parks.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I have a motion from Councilmember Fisher, second from Councilmember Beaumont. Any discussion on the motion? So looking for flags, Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, my, my position on this hasn't changed. I think it's, the interesting thing is, is that we often, you know, while we think this is a, you know, a good thing, the unintended consequences that are there. It's the second amendment, right? Where both of you guys are saying, I'm second amendment, I think we should be able to have concealed carry, but we don't want open carry. But if you approve this and if there was something that occurred where residents needed to or wanted to carry, they couldn't unless they got an open carry. How long does it take to get an open carry? Concealed carry? Sorry. Chief?
Chief.
What's the, what's the waiting period for concealed carry permit? Yes, correct. Yes. Correct. I know, I just wanted to get it on a, it's about 30 days roundabout to go through the whole process. Okay. So if you, you know, there's, there's a couple of instances that I could think, because I thought about this once you guys brought it up the last time too. And, you know, if we do live in an area where there is, we have a penitentiary here, God forbid. I, you know, if there was an inmate that got out, well now I, I'm not going to walk it up. I'm going to walk in the park with a concealed carry, but if I don't have a concealed carry, I'm not going to walk in the park and I can't open carry. We also have boat launches that are in the park system. And I guess the other thing would be, well, how are you going to address hunters that are using a jet sled to go out and they're carrying their firearms? Is that not allowed? I mean, there's just a lot of different, but the bigger thing for me is I'm just, I'm a, I'm a second amendment guy, but those are just a couple of additional things, because I know you guys are second amendment. And if you're advocating for an open carry, you got to think of, well, if you're advocating for an open or a concealed carry, that means that you believe that people should be able to protect themselves. And then if it's, you're saying, I don't want the open carry, well, then you're disenfranchising those to protect themselves. If there was an event that occurred that we were in a kind of an intermediary state, then they wouldn't be able to protect themselves based off of what you guys are proposing. So that was just my comments. Thank you. I will not be voting for.
Thank you, Councilmember Gamble. Councilmember Hanford? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, sorry. I concur with, with what Councilmember Gamble said. Yeah, it's not, it's, we haven't, it's, hasn't been an issue here. Haven't had issues in the past. I don't think I've ever seen anyone walking around with a rifle in our parks. And even if they did, it, it hasn't been an issue in all this time. So I'll be voting against.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
I agree with Councilman Hanford and Councilman Gamble. However, if, I'll be voting for only because in deference or in consideration for other councilmen that they want to address the issue, I would be glad to hear their point if they'd like to try and change my mind. But that's the reason I would be voting for it.
Thank you. And to your point, there's some work that the staff will need to do to put together a staff report so that everybody's aware of what the different laws are. So that's one of the reasons why bringing this back is important is so that you have the facts you're looking for. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead. Councilmember Foulcher?
Yeah, I know we talked about this recently and I feel like not a lot of us are going to change our mind. But here's the thing about a person who's going to use a weapon against people in a bad way, they don't care what the rules say. So to me, the, the idea of saying, oh, no open carry, doesn't really stop someone who's really intending on doing evil. I am, however, willing to talk about it and to see what that means to us. My fear is the same as Councilman Gamble's that when, when someone is, when their intent is to do wrong, we don't have time for a 30-day license to, to make sure that we are following the rules when the person doing evil is not following the rules. I don't know, I think it's worth the, the discussion. You're going to really have to work to change my mind on it, though. I'm always open to a discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Mayor, would we be able to pass 6.3 tonight and, and address this as a separate issue?
Absolutely. And that's the way that we kind of left things the last go-around. So you do have the ability to pass 6.3. If you'd like, you could then go ahead and make a motion to request that this be brought back for conversation over open carry in our park system. And that, that would be another way to do this. So if this motion fails, you could do 6.3 and, but, and then follow it up with the motion.
Tack it on with, okay.
Yep. Okay.
Right.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion that's currently on the floor? Okay. See, Councilmember Gamble.
Just to clarify your point, if we vote in favor of this motion, this will delay the action on this. If you vote against, it'll allow us to vote on 6.3 so we can let it go forward. And it doesn't preclude a council member or a couple of council members make a motion to bring back, to talk about and have discussion. That's, I just want to make sure everybody understands that, because I think everybody, I mean, all of us are willing to discuss. We all have our positions, but I'd like to pass 6.3. There's no reason to hold it up. We can still have the discussion, but it would be really great if we could pass this.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
So agreed, there's no reason to hold this up. I just wanted to bring this discussion back. And this obviously turns into a big discussion when we start talking about this. The, the thought of the right to bear arms in your home, the examples are people from the prison. I'm not going to grab my guns and go down to the park and try and hunt somebody down or do any of those things. There's lots of areas that we can't open carry. Schools is one of them. I think hospitals is another one. There's a lot of areas that we can't open carry. So I think adding parks to that list is not unreasonable.
All right. Thank you. Any, any other discussion on the current? Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
I just want to clarify, because the statement that was made about hunting down somebody that's in the park, my comment was, is that to make the statement that I can have a concealed carry so I feel safe walking through the park if there is elements at large, I was making the subsequent that a citizen that doesn't have that and it would take 30 days, they have the same right to feel safe if they wanted to go and use the parks and walk through. That's what I was saying, not hunt somebody down. That'd be stupid. But I just want to, I know that's what you were implying, but that's definitely how I came across. All right. Thanks.
Okay. So let me just follow through. Would they be able to table the current motion and then vote on the ordinance and then come? Are they, are we, so I've heard differences of opinion on this. Are they able to withdraw the motion by the maker and the second? Okay. So that is another option. I've heard difference of opinion on that one. So the maker of the motion and the second can withdraw the motion from the floor. And then if you'd like, you can follow up this ordinance motion with a subsequent motion to have it brought back if you like, or do it another time. All right. So go ahead and maker of the motion.
Make a motion to withdraw my motion.
You don't have to make a motion withdrawal. You can just say, I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw my motion.
Yeah, does the second concur? Okay. All right. The motion is withdrawn. All right. Councilmember Gamble, who's leaning forward?
Make a motion to accept a second reading and adopt ordinance number 0172025, amended chapter 9.28, MMC Park Code, providing for severability and establishing effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, second from Councilmember Foulcher for 6.3 requested action is shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Okay. Is there a subsequent motion? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Fisher. I didn't see.
So bring back the other motion and to talk about our firearms in our parks.
Okay.
For discussion.
Okay. So you're making a motion to provide direction to mayor and staff to bring back
Exactly.
information related to open carry of firearms in our parks. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. So I have a motion from Councilmember Fisher, a second from Councilmember Beaumont. As just stated, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 5-2 with Councilmembers Hanford and Gamble voting against. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll bring back information about open carry in our park system. All right. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is an executive session. How much time are we going to need for the initial, is the estimate? Okay, for an initial 10 minutes it'll be. So Okay, for an initial ten minutes it'll be, uh, so, um, seven point one potential litigation person to RCW forty two point thirty point one ten subsection one subsection little I for initial ten minutes. Uh, there will be action to follow, uh, so we are starting right now at seven thirty PM for initial ten minutes. Any extensions will be announced here in chambers and again, uh, we will return to session, um, and there will be action to follow, thank you.
The executive session has been extended ten minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes.
All right, we're back out of executive session, the time right now is eight PM, gonna go ahead and turn to Megandaro uh, for our presentation under item eight, eight point one, Republic Services Contract Response to Labor Disruption Event.
Can you hear better, okay. All right. Uh, the labor disruption caused by Republic Services sympathy strike in July caused two weeks of missed pickups for Monroe customers. Um, as you remember, in July, the mayor sent a letter to Republic Services requesting information regarding their communications plan to customers during this disruption as well as requested a credit back to customers. Later in July, in August, Republic Services replied to that letter and offered a service credit back to residential customers based upon two weeks of missed collections. They have also agreed to reimburse the cost of the community collection event on July nineteenth. Tonight, the council has an opportunity to make a motion regarding the offered services credits by Republic Services if they so choose. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and turn to the council, are there any questions or motion? All right, go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
I move that the city council authorize the mayor to convey a counter offer to Republic Services to resolve all potential claims, credits and/or litigation out of the July twenty twenty five labor disruption event up to the amount and subject to the parameters recommended of an executive session.
Hanford seconds.
Have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Hanford, any discussion on the motion, Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I, I just wanted to, to voice my just the displeasure and the, the, um, you wanna say a pain in the neck, but the pain and suffering caused by this disruption to the neighborhood, the neighborhoods that I was, was walking in, there was garbage blown all over because of the hot weather and birds and garbage piling up on the streets. And, uh, rodents and animals getting into the garbage. Uh, it was, it definitely had an effect on the looks of our city. And, uh, the smell from trying to, to keep the garbage at bay either in my garage so that rodents and animals wouldn't get to it or, um, bagged up, it just, it, it just was a real hassle and something that we shouldn't have to, to deal with. Also, the, the fact that we had to pay at the dump and haul our own garbage to the dump and pay, so now we're paying again money that we're already paying for garbage service that didn't come through. And recycle as well and our yard waste. Um, it just, it caused a lot of disruption and I just wanna again voice my displeasure at the whole thing.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hanford, any other discussion, go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
So agreeing with Councilmember Hanford and also talking about, I happen to have a dump truck, um, so there was something, went out in the neighborhood talking about extra cost. Uh, the directions were, uh, throw your garbage in the back of the dump truck and put five bucks in my mailbox. So this was an additional, some people put twenty, this was depending on how much garbage they had, this was an additional cost. So not just the cost of our monthly fee or bi-monthly, whatever it is. Um, there was also that additional cost, um, for our residents and then, I mean, let alone, then they kinda turned into a garbage truck too, cause they were putting in the back of their cars and bringing it over to my house. And so, yeah, there is definitely more damage that was done than just not picking it up monetarily.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, I echo a lot of the same comments and that was, you know, and just in looking at the initial the thing that kinda jumped off at me, that the off the page was the fact that the credits didn't offset, even if only half of our residents paid, which I, I know they did, there was a ton of them, uh, that did, I was one of them, and a couple of neighbors and, you know, and helping out there. Uh, the, the, the credits don't offset that. Uh, and then I, you know, I think it was also just the response in the letter that I was a little taken aback because, um, this, you know, while we weren't aware of sympathy strikes, that type of stuff, and I, I just, there was one in twenty twelve, I'm almost positive, we've had these in the past. It just was not handled appropriately and it just was a lack of, uh, ownership there in that response letter. Uh, and, you know, I've, I've been here quite a while, so I've gone through the call center issues when we couldn't pick up the phone. Uh, when, you know, I'm going through the contract and then pushing on the recycling services when all of a sudden we couldn't prove that they were actually being recycled, that they were being sent overseas. Uh, so there's just, you know, the whole thing kinda rubbed me the wrong way, so, um, I just wanted to put that on the record and I, I, I don't want this to be, obviously I made the motion on this, on the, you know, on that for, for a counter, but I don't want this to be the last time we talk about it, cause this one really, it, the response of that really got me fired up. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaumont.
I just wanted to share that it was very disruptive to us as council members and the city staff because we were left in the dark with what was happening and the trust, um, you know, our residents are supposed to be able to trust us to keep them updated and informed on what's going on. And because we did not have, um, regular communication and communication apparently was, was going through other channels that we were not aware of at times, like on Facebook and things like that. It really damaged, I think, our reputation with our constituents and our residents. And that is a really big deal, once that happens, it's hard to get that back. And, you know, we're up here to serve the community and to not be able to do that due to a lack of communication was really harmful to us, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulcher.
Yeah, I think that we, we use words like it was inconvenient and, and whatnot, that does not, um, that is glossing over the change of life that happened in our city for a couple of weeks. Um, I know that there was a, there was a statement, well, businesses are being serviced. Well, uh, if you own a business in a, in a neighborhood, that is not true. And when, when, um, garbage is piling up, the rodents are very happy. Luckily, there is a dump truck availability in my neighborhood and I have a fine neighbor who took care of that, but to say the least, it was inconvenient and the six dollar credit or whatever this might reflect on each of our individual bills, it does not touch what the issue is. I do, I do a massive amount of recycling and I had bags piling up and there is, like I said, no, like Jason said, there's no guarantee that that actually gets recycled in the end too. Um, I am very conscientious about my garbage, I'm a weirdo about that. I actually had a, a video made of my garbage not too long ago because I do such a good job with it and it bothered me in, in the least, just to have that, um, it didn't quite feel third world, but it was getting there. I was at a Snohomish County Cities meeting during all of that and I remember someone asking, what does it take to declare an emergency? And I thought, oh, honey, we're not there yet, but it does feel like this is, this is something that really has to be addressed, but, um, I am not happy with the offer that we were given. And I would like a, we have a counter offer, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? All right, um, yeah, and, um, I'm just gonna go ahead and add also in addition to the uh, issues that council members have mentioned relative to businesses and residents here in our community. Um, this created a substantial amount of work on my behalf and on staff's behalf. We're talking administration, we're talking communications, we're talking legal. Um, there are other things that go, uh, above and beyond what, uh, the offer was from Republic, uh, relative to the impact to our community. And so, um, we'll go ahead and we'll put together, if this motion passes, a letter that reflects, uh, more closely what our costs are. Uh, feel that the offer that came forward from Republic, uh, does not, uh, meet the actual costs of, uh, what our community went through during those last couple of weeks. Um, so council members, thank you for the motion, is there any other discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero, thank you very much, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that's unfinished business item number eight point two, Connor Annexation Ordinance with Amy Wright. Good evening.
Testing, perfect. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight for the, uh, the first reading of ordinance number zero two two, two zero two five for the Connor Annexation. So the Connor Annexation area is a single parcel and it's approximately point six, seven acres in the southwest UGA. Um, in total, the annexation area is one point nine one acres and that includes the adjacent right of way. So it's immediately a west of Monroe city limits and adjacent to Monroe High School. It also is, um, next to Tester Road, which runs along five twenty two. We adopted pre-zoning for the subject property, um, back in twenty twenty two and it was at that time, um, slated to be four units per acre, so in the R four zone. You may recall recently with the adoption of Monroe twenty forty four, um, R four zone was, you know, anything that was in the R four zone was moved to R seven. And so this property as well will be, um, updated to R seven zoning with the passing of this ordinance. So as shown on the map, the Connor property is in the southwest UGA. It is the only parcel, um, that is east of Tester Road and five twenty two. Just a timeline of events, this, uh, Mr. Connor, who is in the audience tonight, he submitted for the annexation back in twenty twenty two. Um, we set a date for our initial meeting, which took place on May tenth of twenty twenty two. And in July of that year, council passed a resolution accepting the notice of intent to commence annexation. Uh, city staff worked, uh, very closely with Snohomish County, Washdott and other stakeholders. And it took some time to find out, you know, to decide where that boundary would be. And ultimately, it's, it's immediately, uh, between Tester Road and five twenty two. Uh, that's what they, they settled on. And so we came back for a public hearing this last March and, um, after the public hearing, staff sent the notice of intent to Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. Um, forty five day review period ended on September eighth and the Boundary Review Board accepted the annexation. So tonight, we're bringing forward the ordinance zero two two, twenty twenty five, um, to, to accept the Connor Annexation.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, my turn to the council, any questions or motion? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Connor, thank you for your patience on this, this, uh, pretty amazing. I remember talking about this in some of my first planning commission meetings a few years ago, so um, I wanna move to accept this first reading ordinance number zero two two, twenty twenty five, annexing the property commonly known as the Connor Annexation area, acknowledging or requiring that the annexation area shall be designated R seven, single family residential, seven units per acre on the city zoning map and residential one on the, uh, comprehensive future land use map. Wiring that the properties in the annexation area shall be assessed and taxed at the same rate and on the same basis as other properties within the city of Monroe, adopting supporting findings, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Gamble for the requested action as shown on the screen under unfinished business item eight point two, any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the question, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero, thank you, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that'll be council member reports, go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
Um, so this last Saturday, I, um, I missed the unity event, but I was, uh, able to hit the, um, uh, the hydrocephalus walk that I talked about before. And I just want you to know how much the proclamation meant to my sister and, uh, uh, my niece, so that was pretty cool, I don't know if any of you guys follow her on, uh, in social, but she's been, she's one of the, you know, raises funds for the hydrocephalus awareness and for, uh, uh, the Hydrocephalus Association. Uh, and so she featured the, the proclamation that Monroe, uh, made, so I, again, I thank, uh, everyone for that, it's just, it's a, it's a great cause, but it was a, it was a great day to be at Magnuson, uh, Park in Seattle, it was just absolutely gorgeous and beautiful. Um, and I heard the unity event, event was great and then the, um, uh, the Apple Cup game was outstanding too, just gonna throw that in there, go Dodgers.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Gamble, Councilmember Walker.
Um, I, uh, wanted to say, Mayor, thank you for your responsiveness to citizens, your proclamation on, uh, um, Monroe's respect for free speech and uh, Discord I thought was awesome and it was well received by the community, the unity, unity event was, uh, great as well. Um, I'm glad that came together and, um, yeah, I attended a Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Study Group, I wanna say it's called, in Everett last week. Uh, there were actually two residents from Monroe there besides me and, uh, Brandy Blair, which was really cool. I thought it was, um, interesting to hear their thoughts on it. They wanted me to convey that, uh, they have been super, two separate individuals, super impressed with, um, the city's responsiveness to their, uh, comments about public works related issues, I thought that was cool. Um, attended the, uh, Charlie Kirk vigil on Sunday as well and, uh, I think it was, it was really special, it was, um, candlelit vigil. Uh, it was really peaceful, there were, um, young people there, there were people praying, I, I just thought it was a also a good representation of, um, the heart of our community, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor, I had a previous, uh, engagement already scheduled, so I wasn't able to attend the unity event, which you know, but, uh, I'm very appreciative of those that were able to make it and the proclamation. Um, just so thankful again, like I said last week, for our community. So grateful, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher.
Yeah, I was at, um, all the previously said events too. Um, we can go through the motions all we want to say that we have unity, but until we stop stalking people who are just having a patriotic moment, um, it's just talk. So I encourage people to follow through with their words. Actually extend kindness, don't be threatened by other people speaking about how much they love our country. Don't try to find the fault in other people's expressions. Other than that, you know, I love Monroe.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, all the same stuff, so I did go to the unity thing, it was great. Um, and, yeah, unity is, unity is a big thing, it's not something that's easy to, uh, work through sometimes. And I think that we are working through it, sometimes maybe not so gracefully, other times maybe we are. Um, kinda echo what Councilmember Fulcher said, um, just be kind, listen to each other. Uh, be accepting of others and. Just be kind, listen to each other, be accepting of others and, and don't jump to conclusions. For God's sake, stay off social media.
I heard a motion in a second. All in favor?
Amen.
Councilmember Beaumont.
Oh, I think I'm going last here. Yeah, just as always echoing the, what the rest of the council up here is saying. Two different events this weekend that brought people together to talk to each other, but more importantly, to listen to each other. And I think that's where it all starts. Going to talk a little bit about Nate Naring and Jared Mead, two of my heroes who started the building bridges project almost two years ago. They came to a chamber luncheon here in Monroe and were talking about it. They took their program to Jackson High School where they changed students' lives. There were students that were going to major in, you know, one subject in college and ended up majoring in poli sci. Those two men have made a huge difference to me personally, and I think to the political climate in general. In terms of one's a Republican, one's a Democrat, they bonded over their young families and some other common interests. And that's where it begins. We're all just people. We have more in common than we have not in common, and that's where it all begins. So keep talking, keep listening and let the healing continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Well, everything's already been said about the unity thing. I was there also. What I found that made me smile was all the young adults that were playing volleyball, joining us in the, in the heart. They didn't know us, we didn't know them, but they sensed something and they joined us. That was cool. That's all.
Thank you, councilmember Scarborough. All right, going to go ahead and move on to staff and department reports. The reports are in your packet. Does anybody have any questions on the reports? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to Mayor and administrative report. Start off with the city administrator extended agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be my last report sitting up here, hopefully for a very, very long time. Appreciate it. There is nothing on the city administrator's extended agenda. Thank, back to you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Did you have any other, you, you have more to read? Oh, that's you. Look at that.
I'm the other. This is also my last pseudo city administrator report, which is also very short. We have decided to postpone our photo op until January. So stay tuned for more details. I appreciate all of your willingness to reserve some time on the seventh, but we're going to go ahead and postpone the end.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Mayor's report last week and a half have been really busy, as all of you have commented on. I, as you're aware, somebody had contacted me about freedom of speech and freedom of assembly. Very early on Friday morning, I went ahead and put together that proclamation. I did forward that on to the party that requested it. They were appreciative of it. So anyway, I also felt compelled to have the unity gathering for anybody that would be willing to, to be there. I appreciate everybody who came. I do understand people not being able to make it, especially with a short notice. I will say that I, I had some really good conversations with folks that were there. One of the things that it goes to the comment on social media that was made. The, the thing is this, the, what I mentioned as somebody who was there is that the enemy isn't the person that has the opposite opinion of you. The real enemy is the people that is getting one another, getting us angry at one another. And we share, if, if you've got differences of opinion on left and right, there, there, there are businesses, media, politicians, activist groups that, that are just algorithms that it, it's all about attracting eyeballs. And I really wish that people in this country could just open their eyes up and understand that the enemy is not the person that you live next to. The enemy is these people making money off of our eyeballs. We really need to find a way to bridge that gap. You talk about bridging the gap and you talked about being active. We, we need to be taking steps against these forces that are making us hate one another. So whether that's another country or it's a, a company making money or an advocacy group getting more people that are becoming part of their organization, a political party, either side, doesn't matter. They're, they're, they're farming value off of us. And we need to be more intelligent than that. And we really need to find a way to speak with one voice and say enough is enough. Because they're making us hate one another so they can make money and gain influence off of us. Might sound like a conspiracy theorist. I don't know. There's a double O seven movie about it. What was it? Tomorrow Never, Tomorrow Never Dies. I, you know, Carver Media Group, that's what we discussed, yeah, interjecting a little bit of humor here. But the point is we, we've known it for a while. Can we just find a way to talk to our neighbors and help deescalate them and understand that we have more, more in common with one another? And find a way to actually acknowledge the problem, which is not my neighbor. It's these forces that are making money and gaining power and gaining influence off of us. It's like when I was asked by somebody to write the freedom of speech and the freedom of assembly, you know, I woke up, I get up at four twenty every morning. I know most of you know that little chuckle for some people because four twenty means something, but to me, it's the time the alarm goes off. I roll over and I check my email from the city. And I, I had an email in there just challenging me to write this proclamation. And I, I'm like looking at it with, in the dark, rubbing my eyes. It's four twenty going, well, duh, of course I'm going to write a resolution. You know, of course I'm going to write a proclamation. I support freedom of speech. I condemn violence against people that are expressing their freedom of speech. I condemn people who would have an adverse impact on a person's life, a person's livelihood and a person's well-being for freedom of speech and freedom of assembly. Duh. I think, I think both sides of the spectrum, if they step back and look at it, agree. So where's the problem? Where's the motivation? You follow the money and you follow the influence. We've just got to find a way to, to tell those entities that are pushing us more and more into this, this opposition that enough is enough. Turn off social media, you know, find different news channels to get your news. Go out and fricking talk to your neighbors. You know, I, I talked to one person who he and I probably have, you know, if I am more political here in this job, we probably have differences of opinion. And I found out he liked both Star Trek and Star Wars, just like I do. I mean, you talk about difficulty, you know, a divided family like Cougars and, and Huskies. Oh, there's nothing worse than Star Trek and Star Wars. But he likes both Star Wars and Star Trek, and so do I. And we talked about Star Wars and Star Trek. We figured Han Solo would, would be, I'm sorry, we, we figured that Jean-Luc Picard probably should have a lightsaber. It, it would, it worked. So anyway, I am going to say that I really, really appreciate the work that the staff did. Liam, Jody, Jacob, the staff that are, the work that our police department did, the work that our parks department did. There were a lot of people that went into making those things happen within maybe forty-eight hours, thirty-six hours. Thank you, each and every one of you. And to the councilmembers, both that took my phone calls when I was trying to find a date and time that worked. And, you know, whether you showed up, you were there in spirit, my heart to yours. Thank you. All right. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on. Thanks for letting me share those thoughts. And we do have a closed session this evening. I know this is a little different for folks, so I'm just going to explain for the, just for the listening public for the record. Closed session is an executive session that occurs without doing extensions on the agenda. So what I will do here momentarily is I will adjourn this meeting. There will be no action to follow. And therefore I will not be extending this executive session that is specific to collective bargaining. So for all intents and purposes, this will be the adjournment of the meeting this evening. So unless there is objection, we will adjourn, followed by going into closed session, collective bargaining person to RCW forty, RCW forty two point thirty point one forty subsection B. So looking to the council, any objection to adjournment? Seeing none, we're adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Go in peace and talk to your neighbors.